City Council Committee of Affairs will come to order. Clerk, please call the robe.
Counselor Kadeem? Dion?
Here.
Kilby? La Liberty? Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Repoza?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Just for the record, Counselor Kadeem is present. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First, we have citizens' input time. First person to sign up is Nelson Vasquez. Subject matter is the MBTA.
Nelson Vasquez, to attend Santa Hill Fall River. If we join the MBTA, we're going to pay more because it's in the law within their funding formula. Here's what it says again. Quote, "State law written in 1999 requires the 175 cities and towns that get MBTA service to contribute to the local assistance fund, which goes up by 2% annually. Payment is based on a city's percentage of the overall population that uses the MBTA divided by the fund's total," whatever that number is. But the law requires some cities to multiply their population to reflect the level of service they get, and that creates a larger payment. Boston's population is multiplied by 18, Brookline and Cambridge by 12, 11 other metro towns, including Arlington, Revere, and Watertown are multiplied by nine. You see, for the past time, we weren't gaining any train service, only the first part of this law was hitting us. But if we join, the second part's going to kick in, and that is the projected cost that we're not going to know until we either say yes into this, because eventually, not too long, we're going to have to give a grade. And then that's going to be part of our assessment for life. And the numbers I just said here, that second part of the law can be confirmed in 161A, Section 9, right in the front page, the same numbers I talked about, Boston, Cambridge, it's right there. And Kara Fiola went on WSAR and didn't even bother to mention that, but she mentioned only the regional transit authority. And by the way, here's a list of all the MBTA communities that also includes Free Town and Lakeville. Okay? You know, this, and what's also striking is that, you know, when you go to Chapter 10, 35T, in 161A, Section 9, okay, Section 9 talks about financial assistance from cities and towns. 35T is, talks about the state and local contribution fund. Both of these funds, and it says it, that they're also adjusted every year with inflation. And we all know how high inflation is right now, a little over 8%. So if we join, we're going to get whacked. Okay? That's, it's the law. And I'm just shocked that none of that's being talked about, that people need to know what those projectives cost. And one of Kara Fiola's constituents, it's been over a month after she said it wasn't going to cost a penny, he's still waiting for it. It's been over 30 days, and you want to know why she has not answered it? It's because she knows the law, and because it's in the law that if you join, you're going to get whacked. You know, and here's the thing, and if we join the MBTA, it's not going to be too long before we start crying foul, just like the ones who are already in it. This is a very serious question that is not being talked about. All of the information we have provided is accurate and relevant, because once you aboard this train, there's no return.
15 seconds, please.
Period, there's no return. So I hope that the people can really pay attention, because this is serious. And for, you know, Paul to say that, "Don't worry about it, checks a box," is totally irresponsible of an elected official, because
Thank you so much.
we are going to pay more, because that's the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bob Kamara. Subject matter, MBTA. MBTA resolution. MBTA stands out.
Counsel President, members of the council, I don't have to, I guess, introduce myself. But I'm here to talk about the resolution, and I want to thank Counselor Dion for proposing a resolution that we have a meeting, because the, just for the record, as we begin, that October 13th meeting is not going to satisfy what we need, and what you need as a city council, and you have a legal and ethical obligation to determine what the long-range impact the MBTA is going to have on this city. And for a state rep and a mayor to go down and cavalily say it's not going to cost us a penny at this time, I'll tell you that that same individual in 2018 said, "Don't worry about the debt override for Durfee, because in five years, we'll probably be able to pay it." And we know that wasn't true, because without the debt override, we'd be bankrupt already for Durfee. So I'm tired of hearing this. The citizens of this city and you, as its fiduciaries, need to get a full disclosure from the MBTA. We need that, we have to have that to make a valid decision. There's a Boston Herald article that says MBTA could face a $421 million budget deficit next year. It's projected that in 10 years, we may be billions of dollars in the hole with the MBTA. So you don't think it's prudent to get those people? I don't, I'm not talking about the project team that's coming in here on the 13th. They're going to tell you how many, how much track they laid, how much, what a great job they're doing on the project? We need people down here who can say, "What does the MBTA look at? What are you projecting for the impact on communities that become part of the authority?" And now I'll give you some legal basis. I sent you all this stuff, so I'm not going to cite the case. This is from the Cornell Law School Legal Information Institute. The duty of care, the duty of care requires the directors, which are you, to inform themselves, and this is a quote from a case, a case that was found in favor of the people who, "Prior to making a business decision, all materials reasonably available to them." You have to access that. Secondly, you have to have, if you've had sufficient opportunity to acquire that knowledge, it's on you. I think everybody knows the MBTA is in trouble. Okay? And lastly, on that particular section, moreover, a director may not simply accept the information presented, rather, the director must access the information with a, quote, "critical eye," unquote, so as to protect the interests of their corporations, and in this case, and stockholders, and we are the stockholders in the city of Fall River. This is outrageous that people are going on the radio and misrepresenting things to say that Lakeville doesn't have a regional transit authority. They're in Gatra. Does anybody know what Gatra is? You do, right? Right? Greater Attleboro, Taunton, that's what it stands for. And Free Town is in Serta. Yet on the radio, he said, "Oh, no, they put their money in a bowl." And not only that, they don't put a lot of money in a bowl, anyway. This is outrageous. This, you have a fiduciary and legal responsibility to get all the facts. That vote will be nullified by the fact that we don't know the information. Now, let me close with a quote, as I always do. Hang on. And this is a good one, because you'll like it, because it's from one here. Let's see. "If the people cannot trust their government to do the job for which it exists, to protect them and promote their common welfare, all else is lost." Barack Obama.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Eric Mack. Subject matter, Alan Ramsey. Are you a Fall River resident?
I am.
Okay, thank you. You have three minutes, sir.
Yeah, so I made a public records request, well, my name is Eric Mack, and I'm a citizen of Fall River, and I made a public records request to the city of Fall River. And public records would do 10 days after the request is made. I gave the city of Fall River an extension of time, multiple extensions of time, and subsequently, they just never produced it, which required me to file a lawsuit against the city of Fall River. After the lawsuit is filed, they're approximately 70 days late giving me the documents. After the lawsuit is filed, in Boston, I go up to Boston with the attorneys for the city of Fall River, they don't show up at the hearing in Boston. After the hearing, they give me the records. Now, it costs me time and money, and there's an attorney's fee provision in the statute that allows me to get the money back. I asked to make a deal with the city of Fall River to settle the claims. They refuse to pay me any money, and more specifically, I believe Alan Ramsey hasn't paid me any, he refuses to pay me. I think that it's irresponsible to behave in that manner, because, A, he didn't meet the deadlines and required me to file a lawsuit, now owes me the money and refuses to pay the money. Now, I got to file another lawsuit against the city of Fall River. So I believe he's leveraging the money of the city of Fall River irresponsibly, and I know that the people here are responsible for that, and for us to continue down this path of lawsuits for no real reason, I just think it's irresponsible, and that's why I came before you to let you know that what is going on right now. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have transfers and appropriations. In accordance? Oh, you have one from there? We have one more, sorry.
We have one that was filed electronically. Honorable counsel, I'm writing in support of Counselor Dion's resolution, calling for a forum regarding the MBTA and questions from city residents from the MBTA management. I understand that on October 13th, there's a meeting scheduled at Morton Middle School. According to the MBTA website and the South Coast Rail subpages, that meeting is to discuss the status of the South Coast Rail project and the schedule status. The meeting is similar to previous informational meetings that were to tell the people what is going on, not to allow people to ask serious questions. With the vote scheduled for November 8th, time is of the essence in setting up a serious forum. Questions that need to be asked will include, with the 10-year projects as they currently stand, what will be the projected assessment that the city of Fall River may need to pay? What will the schedule be like? What will happen if a no vote prevails? What happens if the line loses money and/or does not meet ridership projections? And what will parking fees be or projected to be? The MBTA generally charges between $5 to $7 a day. These are just a few of the questions that need to be addressed by the MBTA for the citizens to make an informed decision on their vote. Another question that was posed to the Elections Commissioner was, does the 20% rule apply as is dictated by the charter? I was told that the question needs to be presented to the city's corporate counsel. While I understand the dilemma that the Elections Commissioner is in, I do not personally trust the opinions of the corporate counsel. It appears that all his opinions appear to justify the actions of the administration or represent the opinions of developers of the administration. It always seems that our new charter isn't worth the paper it's printed on. Finally, where's the Charter Review Committee that was required by Charter to be formed and to meet this past year? Once again, the mayor and the city council have violated the charter and denied the people their right to review the areas of discrepancy in the charter. It may now be too late to form that committee now, as they have to have their report and potential changes by June of next year. This proves that our elected officials are not to be trusted and are willing to violate the law at every turn. Respectfully, C.J. Ferry.
Thank you. Next, we have number transfers and appropriations. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 32 of the Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriation to your honorable body, that the sum of $52,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to cemetery upgrades expenses for the sale of burial lot funds. There a motion?
So moved.
Motion for it for body, to full counsel?
Yep, made a motion.
Motion made by Counsel Pereira?
Second.
Second by Counsel Washington. On the motion, Counselor C1, Counselor Kadeem?
Can I just have somebody from the administration come down?
Absolutely.
Got a question.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Is this just a, an annual, I don't think it's annual that we make this request. Is there something specific for the expenses that we're targeting in terms of the upgrades?
Yes, there are two projects in particular. One is a cemetery master plan, and the other is a repair of a stone wall on Locust Street.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Counselor in seat six, Counsel Perry?
Mr. Perano, is part of that money going to be used to fix the garage on Bullock Street? You poured the, they poured the foundation, not you, but that was poured years ago, and we still haven't had a building, yet we're buying equipment, and it hasn't been in there. Could you just keep us in the loop when you make a plan on constructing that building?
Certainly, we're working with the administration on the capital improvement plans right now.
Thank you. That I yield.
Thank you. No further questions?
I'm just, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't see the letter in here that broke down the master plan and the stone wall repair. Just in terms of the master plan, what exactly are we covering in the master plan? Obviously, the growth, development of the cemetery, is there anything in addition? Does it include equipment?
Sure. It doesn't include equipment or construction. The consultant, BSC Group, who designed our expansion, is going to come in, do a comprehensive look at the existing conditions of the cemetery, give us a maintenance plan, review our operations to make sure that we are operating efficiently with the manpower that we have, and then also look at development of both historic infill graves that respect the history of the cemetery, as well as developing a potential eight acres of currently wooded land.
So is there, is there an expectation if they find some deficiencies or ways to improve some efficiencies with the operations, will they make recommendations at that point, or will they just highlight?
So they will be making recommendations in their full report.
Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Vice President Dion?
Yeah, the sale of burial lots, that's perpetual care money?
There are two different funds. So when we sell a lot in the cemetery, 50% of the money goes into sale of lots, the other 50% goes into perpetual care.
Okay, so the funding that will be used from the sale is in the, is in the 50% that is not perpetual care?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. There being no further questions? Motion has been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, that the sum of $3,800 be and the same is hereby appropriated to cemetery upgrades expenses from the sale of burial lot funds. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion for full counsel has been made by Counsel Kadeem, for a second.
Second.
Second by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, just discussion.
Counselor in seat one?
So if I could just have the image? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, was this not, I'm sorry, which one was this?
This is item number two on one.
I'm sorry, no, never mind. I apologize.
Motion has been made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 32 of Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriation to your honorable body, that the sum of $43,900 be and the same is hereby appropriated to the EMS expenses from the EMS Fund Stabilization Fund. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion for full counsel has been made by Counsel Pereira, and seconded by Counsel Repoza. On the motion, Counselor C1, Counselor Kadeem?
If I could just have somebody from the administration come down? I just got a question as to why we're purchasing a used vehicle versus a brand-new vehicle? I know mileage is low, but I remember way back when, when we were taking everybody's second-hand, especially for the fire department, and we're using it as a frontline, I just don't want to get back into that routine.
This particular vehicle was originally purchased by the town of Tisbury at Montez Vineyard. They basically bought it for special operations for the ferry. It basically sat in their station until they traded in to get a new one. It's got 1,600 miles. It's showroom condition. It still smells new.
Okay.
I've talked to our maintenance shop. It's a gas Ford, it's not a diesel. The truck is A1 condition. It's not, there's not a dent, scratch on it. It'll last us 20 years.
Yeah, so obviously, it's fully outfitted already.
Absolutely, it's got everything you can think of, lights.
What would you, and I know you, I don't know where it is, but I believe it, the total cost was $88,000?
Eighty-eight, yeah, that truck, brand-new right now, is about $190,000 to $200,000 for that same truck.
All right. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. I just have one quick question. What's the warranty on that truck with the mileage it has and the year of it?
We get a one-year warranty from Bulldog, from the purchasing, whatever purchasing it from.
No manufacturer's warranty or expired?
No, that's expired. We could buy an extended warranty, but for the amount of time it's actually used, I think it's pretty fair to say, as long as we maintain it, change the oil, keep up on the maintenance, I don't think we're going to have any issues with it.
All right, good. Thank you so much. Motion has been made and seconded to full body, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All opposed? Item number two of two, that the sum of $55,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to the EMS expenses from the EMS Fund Stabilization Fund.
Motion.
Motion to full body has been made by Counsel Repoza.
Second.
Second by Counsel Pereira. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, item number three is a resolution. Resolution, the administration considered implementing the use of body cameras by the Fall River Police Department. This was tabled back in May 10th of '22.
Motion to lift from the table.
Motion from Taylor's made by Counsel Vice President Dion, seconded by Counsel Repoza. Discussion on the motion, Counsel Perry, any question?
I do, if administration could come down.
You can come down, please.
My understanding is that there is a process ongoing with the police department regarding body cameras. I know you can't get into specifics, but just for the public to know, body cameras sound good, and we like body cameras, but the cost of body cameras, we have covered for five years with ARPA money and a grant, correct?
That's correct.
But after that?
Counselor, if I may, we didn't take a vote on lifting it from the table, I apologize.
Oh, I thought we did.
I thought we did, too, but the clerk brought to my attention.
Motion to lift from the table.
I think Counsel Vice President Dion made that motion.
Has made it, seconded.
Counsel Repoza made the second, correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, so I think we did, but that's fine. Any opposed? No? Counsel, please continue, sorry.
Just that I, you know, for people to understand, that it's the purchase of the cameras, it's any repairs of cameras, it's storage of cameras, it's where are we going to keep the film on these cameras, and who's going to keep those? If somebody comes in and wants to, whether it's a prosecutor or an attorney or general public, somebody wants to come in and get a freedom of information, get that copied, there is a cost to all of that. Although, I think, I thought we were just going to do a small pilot program, but it doesn't seem that we are, but just so that people are aware, body cameras and a lot of these new police reform bills come with a price tag that the community should be aware of. But with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor C2, Counsel Vice President Dion?
We have done a pilot program, haven't we? With the superior officers?
Not just superiors, there were sergeants and lieutenants, as well as patrol officers using the cameras in the various ways that different officers would in their different assignments, yes.
So that pilot program was completed?
It was completed pursuant to the completion of a policy that was tentatively agreed to by both superiors and patrol.
And the outcome was the chief of police satisfied with how the cameras operate, the benefit for the public and the police department in having them?
With the small sample that we have, and it's several months, but it's still small compared to an entire department, yes.
So moving forward, they feel it would be a benefit to this community?
Both a benefit to the officers and a benefit to the public. The most transparency that we can provide to both sides is the best thing we can do for public safety.
So essentially, this is an investment in safety and protecting the police department and the community?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion?
No, motion referred to counsel.
Motion referred to full counsel.
Second.
Second by Counsel Vice President Dion. Item number four, resolution, the administration provide update on the timeline of the distribution of COVID-19 premium pay for city employees was adopted August 16th of '22. Is there a motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift.
Second.
Motion has been made to lift from the table by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira, sponsor of the resolution.
Just a question, when will people be looking at getting this pay into their paychecks?
So some of the, so actually, I'm going to answer your question, Counselor, but I want to give some context.
Sure.
So originally, I think, most of the cities and towns that were considering using ARPA money in this way, the premium pay way, didn't think that it had to be associated with a bargainable benefit to the unions that were working in their respective towns. Massachusetts courts indicated different, and it became a question that was bargainable. So that delayed, not unnecessarily, and there's nothing pejorative about me saying it was delayed, it just meant that we had to go through the bargaining process in all of the contracts to make sure that the amount of the premium pay that would be given to each member of each bargaining unit was agreed upon. So with those contracts that we have settled, that premium pay has either been paid or is being paid. We are very, very close, literally on the precipice of settling two more contracts, and that payment will happen immediately thereafter. And then the only thing that'll be left is there is one contract that it may end up in arbitration, and I think the thought is that in order to not, in order to not disadvantage the members of that bargaining unit, we would actually like to make that payment before we end up settling that agreement, just so no one's left out, but we're still working through the details of that with the union.
Were you able to use ARPA money?
Yes, this is ARPA money, the premium pay for all city employees that worked a minimum of 250 hours during March to March during COVID, which really encapsulates the vast majority of employees.
And was there something relative to ARPA money that you had to have a new contract? Or you had to settle a contract before paying the premium pay?
It was more that the question of who got the premium pay and how much the premium pay was, was made the subject of bargaining. That wasn't anticipated originally. I think because ARPA in general was kind of a new world for everybody, and we were figuring out the rules, and the rules changed several times until there was a final rule issued in the spring, there was just a question as to whether we could just give the money or whether it had to be subject to an agreement in, with the union and the city. And that's what eventually happened, is we just, you know, belt and suspenders, we made sure that it was part of the agreement for everybody.
Not that I 100% agree with that. I would say, if you had the ARPA money, give them the pay, they deserved it, they worked it. However, I'm glad to hear you say that even if the other, one other contract isn't approved, you know, or they're still negotiating that, those individuals would still get the money. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C4, Counsel La Liberty?
So I feel the same way as Counselor in seat six. You already know this, I don't think it should be bargainable. It kind of takes away the thank you for doing the work. And I'm just going back to the email that I sent you. Earlier this year, we had four contracts come before us. Three out of the four didn't have it in their contract, one did, the superior officers. They've already been paid.
They have.
And then out of the other three, your response was, sorry? The employees have either already received their payment or will be receiving their payment shortly. So the four that came before us earlier this spring, they've all received their payment? Because it wasn't in three of the contracts.
So that would be law, which I believe that payment's being made right now. Actually, I'm going to ask Mr. Macalini to come down, just because he's the one that's been executing these payments. I believe, just for the record, the unions we're talking about that were settled at that time, we have AFSMI, law, which is our custodians, superiors, and who am I missing?
Environmental.
Environmental police, which is two members of a bargaining unit.
So, thank you. Superiors, environmental, and law are all set. We've had agreements, superior's been paid, environmental and law will be done shortly. We have TAs with patrol and Teamsters, and then we are actively bargaining still on some of the others, so that's why you haven't seen them come through yet.
Just for the record, TAs are tentative agreements.
So my question is, if it wasn't in their contract, and you just said it has to be bargainable now, then how did you pay it?
We can do side letter agreements separately, so things changed after we had done, we got We got more information after we had settled the superiors contract, so we took a different approach going forward.
Okay, and are the amounts also different than we were told earlier in the spring? I heard, I think I heard you say something about that.
So I believe it was in the newspaper that public safety would receive three thousand, and the rest of city employees would receive two thousand five hundred. That's been the framework that we've been using.
So three thousand and two thousand, so just public safety is getting the three thousand?
Three thousand and two thousand five hundred, twenty-five hundred and three thousand.
Okay, and it's going in their paycheck, correct? They're gonna get it with taxes taken out?
Yes, we looked in it, but it's taxable wages.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Debuting, no further questions. Entertaining the motion. Counselor Seat Five, Counsel Pelletier, have a question?
Yeah. Three thousand, you said, for safety, police, and fire?
Police, fire, EMS.
And EMS. Okay, and twenty-five hundred for the rest of them?
Yes, sir.
That's DPW and who else?
So Teamsters, DPW, so AFSMI, which includes clerks, it includes folks in, there's DPW, there's water, folks that would be in City Hall as well as in the Water Department. The majority of people here in Government Center, but there are some Lewiston Street employees that would be included in that. So city employees that wouldn't, that aren't part of those three, police, fire, and EMS units. So it's, the AFSMI is a mix. There's probably more than a dozen sub-units within it.
The school department don't apply, right?
So we don't control the school department budget. They have ESTR money, which is their sort of equivalent of ARPA money. Because we have no control over their budget, their raises, or anything else, it's just not, it's part of the city certainly, but it wasn't, it wasn't part of what we worked on.
About the library, they went to where?
The library is their union member, so they receive the twenty, they'll receive the twenty-five hundred.
All right, the thing I get is everybody's looking for the money, of course.
Of course.
And a lot of them don't like what's happening now. A lot of them, they get, they stipend at the end of the year for longevity, and they're ninety-nine it. And I'm getting DPW saying, you know, we're waiting for the money, we're waiting for the money, but we have to pay the taxes. We usually ninety-nine it, and we get all the money, and at the end of the year, you pay. So what's, how come does it change?
So the CFO could probably speak to this better if she would like to. Otherwise, the W. Four changed. The IRS rolled out new regulations that changed, so you can no longer write in nine. There's just three options to choose. I think it's married, single, and head of household. So the old form, you could write zero through nine and make that change. Under, I believe the Trump administration, they changed how the I. Nine and the taxable wages are done.
So that's a new rule?
Yes.
All right, I can let them know. I'm not gonna be happy, I guess, but it is what it is. Is a change. Some people like it. Most people won't like it because they want the whole thing and pay it at the end of the year. So what's the timeframe of these guys that, I don't know, you're waiting for the union to get done, but how long's it gonna take?
So as soon as the unions, so when we have a tentative agreement, I would suggest that we would only say it's a tentative agreement if it's really, you know, up to the body of the union to vote and decide whether they're gonna go forward with the agreement as it's been agreed upon between the bargaining group and the city. That's the case with a couple of the unions. As soon as they agree, we can go ahead and pay.
Are you almost there?
Very close.
And say everything is settled next week? How soon is the money train coming in?
Well, there's still a little paperwork and administration that has to be done on our end, but as soon as we possibly can, we'll have that payment, those payments issued.
It's our priority as soon as we settle a contract.
Yeah, we know they're not moving too fast, you know? But these people work, and they work hard. They like to get their money as soon as they can. I hope you guys can do the best to get the money to these guys. So, you know, I get the complaints, and everybody else that's sitting there will get complaints, and we gotta answer them anyway. I mean, they're watching tonight. They get an idea of what's going on. But they know what's going on. Somebody can tell them what's going on, when you're gonna get your money. And that's all. I'm looking for, make sure these guys get paid in a timely fashion. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Seat Two, Counsel Vice President Dion?
Who is not qualifying for premium pay?
I'm not.
And we're not.
So, right, it's a council, so I think a lot of people in this room. So obviously, you know, people that came on after the date, right? So I didn't start till the May, or May after the cutoff. So there's folks that just, their start date precludes them from getting it.
So essentially, anybody that was in City Hall and worked is gonna get premium pay?
There will be exceptions to that, and that's part of what we're working out the language on and the different agreements. There are some caveats to that.
But we're not excluding non-union members. So there's some folks in the Finance Department and some other places in the city that are not union, but that doesn't preclude them from getting the premium pay as, you know, employees in Government Center. But there are some exclusions. It's not finalized yet, but the vast majority of people will get the premium pay.
So let's assume somebody worked through, beginning to end, they fulfilled the entire timeline, and then recently retired. Do they get the premium pay?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Seat Six, Counsel Pelletier, do you have any end up?
No, I was just gonna put pressure on both of the gentlemen at the table and say, can you guarantee us that by the end of October, all of this money will be given out to the employees?
I can't guarantee that.
Can't guarantee that.
And the reason I can't guarantee that is that there's things that are out of our control. It's union stuff that I can't comment on, but it just, it comes down to the time it takes to settle the agreements. As soon as those agreements are settled, it'll be done.
Yeah. Well, other places got them without agreements being settled, is what we talked about earlier with ARPA money. So with that being the case, then I would hope that people would be able to get paid. But just that for months and months and months, people have been asking us. So could you at least let us know what pay period it's gonna go into, the workers, so we can let?
As soon as we have a firm date, we'll certainly do that.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Debuting, no further questions. Entertaining the motion?
Motion.
Motion for body?
Huh?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
No.
Put this in committee first.
Oh, this came in first.
Motion for body is made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Kadim.
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Subject input has been... There's one more member that signed up for citizen input, please. Tammy Mostico, subject matter, reorg. You have three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is citizen input?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
She signed up and wanted to speak?
No, that's fine. I just thought it was an agenda item when I was trying to figure out what.
No, no, no.
Sorry.
Good evening. I'm here because there's really, I'm not sure where I'm supposed to speak. As an employee, I am currently the director, the acting director of facilities. I'm the project manager for facilities and the purchasing agent for the entire city and school sides. So I just wanna bring some clarification to what's been said on my behalf of the reorg and from my position, my department's position. So tonight, you have the opportunity to vote on the second reading related to the proposed reorganization of city departments. I've been following this very closely because this proposed reorg affects two positions within the Department of Facilities Maintenance, one of which I currently hold as acting director, for which I have been fulfilling the duties for coming up to eighteen months. The other is that of project manager, which is my permanent position that I have been carrying out for a little over four years. In addition, as I just mentioned, I'm also the purchasing agent, which I planned on being for approximately four months to carry us over, and that is going on two and a half years. At the eight-nine meeting of the ordinance committee, it was stated that I went to the administration with a really excellent plan to plus up the Department of Facilities Maintenance, and that there is a tremendous value to the work that we do. As the meeting goes on, it's stated that the reorg affects two positions in facilities, the director and the project manager, both of which I hold. I wanna set the second, the record straight, that in no way, shape, or form did I plan the presented, that the plan that was presented to the administration removed myself from the two positions that I worked so hard to fulfill and maintain continuity after the abrupt departure of the previous director. The plan I presented consisted of a way to utilize the current salary and personnel structures within the department to provide relief for myself of the three positions, hopefully down to one. And to, and by doing that, I was using the current positions, salaries, open positions to increase the hourly rate of licensed trade positions in an effort to fill longstanding vacant licensed electrician and plumbing positions, hoping to attract local tradesmen and women.
Fifteen seconds, please.
That may consider fulfilling these positions at not nearly close to prevailing wage, but may be attractive because of the stability. When I was asked to be the project manager for facilities, I wasn't the first choice.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
First is made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel Committee of Finance, now adjourned.
Ten minutes.
Clerk will call the rule.
Counselor Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
La Libberty?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Reposo?
Yeah.
Washington?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council channel please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for a shoot to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor and the order transferring the sum of fifty-five thousand eight hundred dollars from the sale of burial lots fund to the cemetery upgrades expenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt. The order has been made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and an order transferring the sum of ninety-eight thousand nine hundred dollars from the EMS stabilization fund to EMS expenses.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three is the mayor's communication and proposed ordinance regarding the salary schedule for the director of the Fall River Emergency Management Agency.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to refer to ordinance committee?
So moved.
Motion to refer to ordinance committee, made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is the traffic commission recommending amendments to the traffic ordinances.
Refer to ordinance committee.
Motion for the committee has been made by Counsel Kadim and seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Have miscellaneous traffic ordinances for passage through second reading and enrollment?
So moved. Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counsel Kadim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item six is the act abolishing the board of fire commissioners for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Passed through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended has been made by Counsel Kadim and seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven is the proposed ordinance which would abolish the board of police commissioners for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended has been made by Counsel Kadim and seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight is the proposed ordinance which would establish the position of the director of city operations for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended has been made by Counselor Seat One, Counsel Kadim, and seconded by Counselor Seat Seven, Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine is the proposed ordinance relating to the reorganization of city departments for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended has been made by Counselor Seat One, Counsel Kadim, and seconded by Counselor Seat Eight, Counsel Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number ten is the proposed ordinance that relates to the salary schedule for contract personnel for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Entertaining the motion?
Number ten. Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion has been made to pass through second reading and enrollment, has been made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Seat Two opposed. Motion carries.
Item, item eleven is the proposed ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended. This is the salary schedule for executive officers, department heads, and non-union personnel.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counsel Kadim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seat Two opposed.
We have a citation for the Italian Progressive Club.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt the citation has been made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Citation is adopted.
Have the police chiefs report on licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, please report licenses, as been made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted.
We have applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Who made the motion? Sorry. Counsel, motion has been made by Counselor Seat Seven, Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fifteen is the request for the transfer of an auto repair shop license.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, to adopt, has been made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item sixteen is a claim.
Motion for a corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion for a corporation counsel has been done by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item seventeen is an open meeting law complaint.
Motion for a corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion for a corporation counsel has been made by Counsel Reposo and seconded by Counsel Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eighteen is an open meeting law complaint.
Motion for a corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion for a corporation counsel has been made by Counselor Seat Six, Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counselor Seat One, Counsel Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And item nineteen is also an open meeting law complaint.
Motion for a corporation counsel.
Second.
Motion for a corporation counsel has been made by Counselor Seat Seven, Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counselor Seat Six, Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty is the Fall River Public Library's annual report.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counsel Kadim, accept and place on file, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. On the motion, Counselor Seat Six, Counsel Pereira.
I just wanna take this opportunity, I did go through the annual report, but I have to say, the Fall River Public Library is doing so much. They have so many activities, so many different kinds of meetings, and they just had something last Thursday for introduction to meditation. introduction to meditation, and I would suggest to all my colleagues, it's good. Meditate. It's really good. But they just have a lot to do. They had something on Stephen King. They do a lot for kids, and ironically, I saw where Dan Madeiras, who works at the Herald News, his daughter referred to David Mello as being the owner of the library, because he's, he is the eyes of the library. But I just want to kudos to that entire committee that works on library. They're doing a phenomenal job. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Reposo?
Yeah, I'm going to echo what my colleague in seat six said about the library. They're doing fabulous job, and I've asked the administration to see if they can assist the library and kind of putting out more publicly what the library is doing, because there are some great programs, and kudos to the individual wrote this report. It's fabulous. The one thing I am going to ask, though, and I did speak to Seth the other day about the bookmobile, I don't know if you want to provide an update on the status of where we're at with that? If I could?
You have to waive the rules to have them come down.
We'll have to waive the rules to have them come down and write about the bookmobile?
Motion waive the rules?
Second.
Motion has been made to waive the rules. We'll have a brief discussion, please.
Literally. It's probably 10 seconds.
Okay. Seth, could you come down, please? Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Come on down, Seth.
So the bookmobile will be delivered on July 1st, 2023. It's a delay from where that date was. It's just sort of like many other things, supply chain issues and getting the vehicle outfitted. That said, they've already made provision for drivers and for routes and everything else, and it's going to be great when it happens, but it'll be midsummer of next year.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And on that note, Counsel, the city council meditation will begin 45 minutes prior to all meetings going forward. Madam Clerk?
Item 21, our minutes of the zoning board of appeals.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have minutes of the city council public hearing held on September 13th.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Public hearings made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Vice President Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas within our community, there is an increased concern of the access to housing in the city, and whereas if left unaddressed can lead to increased homelessness and other life-changing circumstances, whereas community organizations provide many supports and services to the community, and whereas these organizations would like to educate the public on these important topics, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth, and Elder Affairs meet with local community organizations to provide information and guidance to the greater community on this important issue.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made by Counsel in seat six, Counsel Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the sponsor of the resolution, Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Reposo.
Do you want to talk on that?
Want to speak?
Yeah, real brief, you know, just a lot of conversation going on, and obviously, we're facing this large problem. So there are a lot of great resources in the city, and I want to try to bring them together in the subcommittee to educate the public of what's available and how to help, how we can reach out to more people. I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Whereas many citizens have expressed concern over the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority referendum and the pros and cons for a yes or no vote, and whereas a yes vote will impose a financial obligation for the city of Fall River, though to what, though to what extent is not known, and the result of a no vote is unclear, and whereas the question shall simply read, shall this city be added to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, and whereas there will be no question summary or any pros and cons statement or discussion to assist the voters in educating themselves prior to casting their ballot as to what the result of the vote will be, now therefore be it resolved that the request be made for representatives of the MBTA to come to Fall River to hold a public forum to clarify what a yes or no vote means and to answer any questions voters may have.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor? On the resolution?
Aye.
Sponsor of the resolution, Counsel in seat two, Counsel Dion?
Yeah, I just, my purpose of writing this resolution is I don't think anybody should be voting blind, especially on something of this significance. I've been informed tonight that the MBTA apparently sent an email somewhat clarifying what a yes or no vote would, would mean and how it would impact the city. My concern is, how do we get it out to the public? How do we let people know and educate themselves prior to placing the vote? You know, there are people who would say this has been coming for 30 years, and people have wanted it for 30 years, but it's, it's significant, and it is definitely going to greatly impact the city of Fall River. It's going to change Fall River forever. So it's a matter of just getting information to the public so that they can feel comfortable when they go into the, into the voting booth and place their vote for the MBTA. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Finance at a meeting held on September 27th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be referred to the full council for action. This was the resolution from this evening's finance meeting relating to the use of body cameras by the Fall River Police Department.
And motion to give the item lease to withdraw?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to give lease to withdraw has been made by Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadeem, and seconded by Counsel Vice President, Counsel in seat two, Counsel Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
The Committee on Finance at a meeting held on September 27th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be referred to the full council for action, and this is the second item, which was the resolution to provide an update on the timeline for the distribution of COVID-19 premium pay.
Motion grant leave to withdraw?
Second.
Motion to grant leave to withdraw has been made by Counsel Kadeem and seconded by Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel will take a two-minute recess so the ordinances can be signed. City Council reconvene? Madam Clerk?
Last before you is for passage through its final ordination, the miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through ordinance, second, to be ordained.
Motion to pass to be ordained has been made by Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadeem, and seconded by Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the passage to be ordained as amended abolishing the Board of Fire Commissioners?
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended has been made by Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadeem, and seconded by Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the proposed ordinance to abolish the Board of Police to pass to be ordained as amended.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended has been made by Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadeem, and seconded by Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The ordinance to establish the position of Director of City Operations to pass to be ordained as amended.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended has been made by Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadeem, and seconded by Counsel in seat eight, Counsel Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel in seat six.
I thought that Counsel in seat two had opposed that earlier. I just didn't want it to slip by.
The reorg?
Yeah.
No. It was the salary.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Madam Clerk?
The ordinance relating to the salary schedule for contract personnel to pass to be ordained as amended.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended has been made by Counsel in seat one. Who seconded that? Counsel, seconded by Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Counsel in seat two, Counsel Vice President Dion, opposed. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
And lastly, we have the proposed ordinance, which is the salary schedule for executive officers, department heads, and non-union personnel to pass to be ordained as amended.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass to be ordained as amended has been made by Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadeem, and seconded by Counsel in seat seven, Counsel Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Counsel in seat, any opposed? Counsel in seat two, Counsel Vice President Dion, opposed. Madam Clerk?
That's all we have.
Motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I just want to bring up, at the last council meeting, we made some changes from customary second and fourth Tuesday of every month. It was changed to the 15th and the 29th because of, there was an election that day, but also one of the councils has a conflict on the 50th, they would change it too. So I would, at this point, entertain a motion to go back to the original dates, which is the second and fourth Tuesday of the month in November.
So moved.
The dates are the November 8th and November 22nd, I believe, Madam Clerk? Yes.
So moved.
Motion has been made to change the council meetings in November to the original dates on November 8th and 22nd.
Second.
Has been made by Counsel Pereira, seconded by Counsel in seat one, Counsel Kadeem. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counsel in seat one.
Second.
Second, Counsel in seat six, Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City council meeting is now adjourned. Good night, everyone.